I'd like to call the November 7th study session for the Des Moines City Council to order. And will Councilmember Buxton please read us, lead us in the flag flow?
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please let the record show that all councilmembers are present. Okay, and at this time, we do take comments from the public. But please note that per council rule 10, because this is a study session, the comments from the pub, public must be limited to the items of business on tonight's agenda. Has anyone signed up? Okay, so since no one's signed up to speak, I'll look and see is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Okay, seeing no one, I will move forward. We're gonna start tonight with our Arts Commission appointment. And is there a motion?
I know there is.
Oh, okay, okay.
I move to confirm mayoral appointment of Jim Full Wyler.
Full Wyler.
Full Wyler, to a three-year term on the City of Des Moines Art Commission effective immediately and expiring on December 31st, 2022. And the reappointment of Nicholas Fanny to a three-year term on the Des Moines Art Commission effective January 1st, 2020 and expiring December 31st, 2022.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Netting, seconded by Councilmember Bangs. Is there any discussion? Okay, Councilmember Bangs and Councilmember Mahoney. You're first.
I just want to say that being the liaison on the Arts Commission, Jim and Nick, I, I met Jim before, last session, and he's got huge amount of energy. And lives in the city, gets along well with the cap, with the, with the Arts Commissioners, and he'll bring a lot to this position, as well as Nick, who has been on for the last, I believe, three years. So, I wholeheartedly recommend and approve.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Councilmember Mahoney?
And I was, I'm just gonna echo especially on Nick Fannin. The guys at all those events, real champion of the community, so it's great to see that he's willing to do it again. And wholly I'll support that as well.
Thank you. I, I think it's great that we have, I mean, the Art Commission is, is one of our commissions where it takes a lot of time from those people who do volunteer. And we've got, we've had some great people step up, so I, I just, it's really a pleasure to be able to appoint these folks. So, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Council 7-0. Okay, at this time, we'll move forward to the life-saving awards.
Thank you, Mayor. My pleasure to ask Assistant Chief Mark Cooy come up to the podium, and he'll proceed with the, the life-saving awards. Thank you.
Great, thank you for having us tonight. I'm here representing Chief Thomas, who has a family engagement. He really wanted to be here, so it's really an exciting time for us in the department to recognize both of the officers that are here tonight. And I'm here to introduce Commander Mike Gradden to give you the details, and I'll hand them the, the awards. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you. What, what an honor. I wanna bring you guys back to the night of August 20th, 2019, when a frantic mother was, found her, her one-month-old child lifeless and had her husband call 911. And this is truly a case where, where seconds count. This evening, these officers got to the house within three minutes. They entered the residence and, and found this, this little boy, lifeless, and immediately began life-saving measures. Opened up the child's airway, immediately began applying some, some light strokes to, to its back and, and after placing him on their, on their forearm. And within one minute, were able to, to get the, the child back breathing, who had coughed up some, some fluids that were in its, its, its airway. So, their actions really, really helped this family who, who was in a, in a crisis. This child could have ended up with some permanent, permanent brain damage and without having oxygen for that, for that amount of time. So, this was an example of officers who were patrol-ready, who were mentally, physically ready to prepare and handle the situation based on, on what faced them. And it is truly an honor to have these two veteran officers up here to get this, this award. So, please, come on up. And this is Master Sergeant Kathy Savage and Master Police Officer Justin Kreip.
Councilmember Bangs.
Before you walk out. Before you go, where are you going? You got work to do? I, I just want to say that knowing both of you and having ridden along with Sergeant Savage and knowing you, Justin, and your compassion with children, just in general, but, but also the citizens in general, that I am just so honored to have you on the force, be available, the first ones on the scene. I mean, you, first responders, I won't talk about fire department. First, first responders are really extremely important. And this is just one great story of all the other tragedies, unfortunately, that I'm sure you go through, but hopefully not death itself. So, I just want to say I'm so proud of you. I'm so proud of your teams. And I want to thank your leadership because they're, they're awesome as well. So, thank you very much.
You know, it's, it's, normally I would have made some smart eloquent remark. And we, and we always, you know, kid each other and joke, but all, all that aside, I, I'm very honored and very proud of each one of you and, and all of your colleagues that, that do the work that you do. I mean, clearly, you made a difference in this family's life, in this child's life, for, for years to come. And it, it is truly my privilege to work with you guys on the street. And, and it's a partnership. And so, thank you all. Thank you very much.
Michael, you have a comment?
Yeah, just, just a brief comment. You know, I think that, you know, public safety, we hear that term used a lot. We hear it at times, criticism directed toward how our city and other cities conduct public safety. But I think that, that the key point to remember is public safety engenders a lot more than simply dealing with crime. And so, for first responders, you guys to get there in time, do the right thing, save a kid. Thank you.
All I'd like to say is, you know, I, I've always had a great deal of respect for the men and women of our team that get, that heavily fortify themselves every day for our protection and deal with things that we don't have to. But this is different in that this is a life-saving measure. This was a panic situation, where you guys came in with a calm head and, and saved the life of a, a child and the future of a family. And that is incredible. So, if there's anything ever that you get to think back and go, boy, were there good things that happened in my career? This has got to be a stellar moment, because it brings, I know me personally, and I believe this city, nothing more than pride. Thank you so much. That is really significant.
Did you, did, were there any comments or is? No, I don't think so. I'm gonna leave it to your commanding officer as to whether or not you can leave.
Actually, I already told the, the chief that, you know, another part of the honor is you get to leave. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Michael, you want to take us forward into the financial portion?
Yeah, this is almost unbelievable at 13 minutes after 7:00, but we're going to our last item.
But it's a big one.
Well, yeah, right. We're gonna, you know, we're right in the budget process right now. Council's done first reading of our budget November 14th, will present second reading to finalize the 2020 budget. But the budget is based on, you know, actuals to date, so that we know where we are in 2019. And then we project the months that have yet to occurred going forward. And so, typically, we try to do financial updates at least monthly, if not extended out a couple of months. Tonight, even in the midst of the budget process, we now have actuals through third quarter, which is September 2019. And so, Beth Ann, our finance director, is gonna just give us a brief summary of what the actuals for 20, through that portion of 2019 look like. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. So, this is, the financial report that you see, the third quarter, is something you've seen before. The property tax revenues, from 2018 to 2019, we anticipated an increase. We're on track with our property tax revenues. We, everybody pays their property taxes, they're due October 31st. So, through September, we've received a little over 50%. Knowing the, the property tax receipts for November, we're really on target to get all of our property tax revenues. So, let's see. Can you scroll down or make it smaller? Okay.
Do you want it smaller?
I think that's fine. Can you scroll with this?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. Should I come up there then?
No, I'll just, I'll just stand there and do it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the help. Okay, so, regular sales tax budgeted in 2019 is about 27% of our general fund revenue budget. We've received the sales tax revenue 12.8% higher than what we received in 2018. So, we're on target to get our budgeted sales tax revenue. We go to the next page. This report, very lucky to have Sean on board, he's been a big help. We put this chart in and wanted to see if this was helpful to you. What this gives is a sales tax by category year over year. So, for 2015 through 20, or 2016 through 2018, those are the year-to-date numbers, and then you have 2019 for the third quarter. So, there has been growth in categories over time, and we anticipate our sales tax, like the chart before, coming in what we expected. So, wanted to provide this information and then find out if it was helpful to you, to give you a view of the categories of what we get sales tax, so.
Consensus is yes.
Okay.
See a lot of bobbing heads.
Okay, I know, it, take, take a little bit of time to.
Will you be able to forward those, these slides to us?
Yes. Yes, we will be able to. So, you're welcome.
Since we're engaged in a little dialogue, and we're down on sales tax, but above you were, there was property tax. Do you know the average number, the average amount that a house, you know, if you were to average? What, you, let me ask a real question. The median price of a home in Des Moines, and then the median amount of sales tax?
Don't have that tonight, but I will make sure I have it for next week.
It's helpful because I, I know that many members of our public don't understand how, when they see their property tax bill, what portion goes every other place and what portion actually comes to the city. And I think it would be helpful for our community to really know the revenues.
Okay.
Yeah, if I may, Mayor. So, next week, we'll bring the property tax levy resolution or ordinance to the council. Perhaps at that time, we can have at least a portion of that information relative to what you're asking. And Beth Ann, I'd just like to point out, correct me if I'm wrong, but the first column, year-to-date, represents .75 of the year.
Correct.
In terms of collection. So, can anticipate an increase of, that would represent .25% is missing October, November, and December.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, on the other, first question is, can you give us an example of what those might be? Just out of, what, what, what is, consists of the other category? Just a couple of ideas.
The other categories?
The last one.
The last one on the bottom.
Do you remember?
Yeah, it's usually things that have multiple categories. So, Safeway has food and they have a gas station. That, that's a bad example, they're in grocery store. But usually, businesses that have multiple categories, they put in other.
Okay, and it looks like you've, over time, the other question I have is, it looks like over time, you guys were able to refine that, because I look in 2016 where it's 386, and now you're probably better to identify what buckets it goes in? Is that, would that be safe to assume? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next one. So, we have our business and occupation taxes. And our business and occupation taxes are coming in compared to 2018, 20% higher. So, we're seeing a growth in our businesses from last year. And we expect to have 75% collected, and we're 89.8%.
So, Beth Ann, would those, would those businesses be small as well as the larger businesses?
Yes. Now, under BNO taxes, if a business has gross earnings less than 50,000, they don't have to pay BNO taxes. So, the smaller businesses, they still report, but they do, do not pay.
But they do pay a particular fee?
They usually, the business license fee.
License fee.
Yes. So, now our franchise fees are less than what we anticipated from what we budgeted. And it's, it's a small amount, but they're fairly stable. So, we're a little below the 75%. Then, our utility taxes compared to 2018, we're 6.3% down from the prior year at the same time. And we're a little less than what we budgeted. And we are still in the process of doing our utility tax audit. We haven't heard yet, but I do know that businesses have submitted the information and they're working on the audit. So, I was hoping to get more, get some results before tonight. But I know one business has, they were, their deadline, I believe it was the middle of October, and they haven't been able to provide the data. So, there's, I think there's some timing as far as when they're getting the data and how long it takes to audit. But I'm hoping by the end of December, we'll have some preliminary results.
Beth Ann, one, one comment on that for, for the council, which council's familiar with. But utility tax audit, to the degree that we have not collected our fair share of receipts, is structural revenue for us, because this would be ongoing over time. So, one other aspect of conservative budgeting that we've employed and utilized is not to project out a guess as to what that, the resources would be, knowing that in all likelihood they're coming, but, but going with what we know we already have. So, just, just a point to make. We look forward to the outcome of that audit, for sure. Thank you.
Uh, just for clarification, so for the 2020 budget, we've, we've adjusted that, what our projections were, to what we know.
Correct.
As, as opposed to going with what our projections were and, and over-budgeting for what our intake was.
Correct. We've kept them fairly stable with what we're receiving this year. So, and when we get the results of the audit, if there is additional revenue, we'll bring that back and ask to put that in the budget.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Then our red light running camera money program. We budgeted 2 million for 2019. Fifteen, 1.5 million is what we consider structural, and then half a million is our one-time. The, as we said, that, you know, the good news is that we, behaviors have changed. We're anticipating only getting probably 1.8 million. So, in the revised budget, we're reducing that revenue estimate. So, you'll see that next week. So, we continue to monitor that, so. Then on our CIP funding sources, the real estate excise tax REIT 1 and 2, we only budget, to be conservative, we budget what we consider like a stable base. Now, when we have large property purchases, like some of the property has turned over up in the business park, that is one time. So, we're gonna bring back in the revised budget, I believe, both REIT 1 and 2, a little over 400,000 in each one of them has extra revenues coming in. So, and I know that in council earlier this year, when we, when one of the properties turned over, we received council approval to use some of that money for the Sky Labs and the Marina redevelopment.
And Beth Ann, I just point out, you could, if you look at July, that represents the sale of the, the Panatoni property in, in the business park that was on the Ferniano properties, the Bartel building. And that was sold, building leases and the land for approximately $81 million. And that's the, the REIT that was associated with that.
So, then, we have our one-time sales and business and occupation taxes. And we budget fairly conservatively. I believe previously, before I got here, we didn't include any of the one-time sales tax and BNO taxes in the budget. But we do know that we're receiving some, and we budget the revenue, but we also budget the expense for it to be moved over to the capital funds for capital projects. So, next week, we'll be increasing that, because it's coming in higher than anticipated, so. So, here's our snapshot of the general fund from the 2019 adopted budget to, through the end of September. Revenues, let's see. When we come down to the bottom, if you can scroll down a little bit, the general fund revenues actuals are 17.5 million. We're about 73% of our revenues, so we're fairly on target. And then our expenditures are at 70%. So, we're a little underspent through the end of September. And our estimated ending fund balance, what we budgeted was 4.2 million, and currently, we have 5.9 million. So, we're again above that 16.67% minimum ending fund balance. So, so we're doing well there. Now, in the development fund, there on the revenues, we're at 55%. And we had talked about when the budget estimates. I budgeted higher than what the projects came in, and we had, Dan had talked about that when we did the budget presentation. So, in the revised budget coming forward next week, we're lowering those revenue estimates. And then we've also are lowering some of the expenditures to account for some vacancies in the, in the fund. So, the revenues are at 55 and the expenditures are at 62%. So, we're still in good shape, but we're making those adjustments as needed, so. And then, this is just, other than the general fund, these are the, all the other funds that we have. Special revenue funds, debt service, capital, and internal service funds. And it gives you what, the estimated beginning fund balance, revenues, actual revenues, expenditures, and then the ending fund balance, as far as a snapshot. And so, we're all in the positive for ending fund balances. And then the next two pages are just the revenues and expenditures by those funds to the budget. And so, this will be, I mean, we've used this to help create the revised 2019 budget along with all the council actions that have been approved through the, through the year. So, that will be in the packet for next week. And then, um, next page. We have the Marina Fund. And the Marina revenues are at 82%. And the operating expenditures are at 71%. So, they're on target, and they're doing well. So, we have, we have some revisions for a capital project, and we've discussed that previously in the CIP, so. CIP, so. And then we have SWIM. And the operating revenues are at 60%, which is lower than the 75. But SWIM revenues are billed on a property taxes, so they are collected with our property taxes. So it's collected usually April, May, October, November. So the October, November, you'll see they'll be higher. And so the, and the operating expenses are on track with how the revenues come in. And the fund is solvent and doing well, so. And in the 2019 revised budget, there have been some changes for the SWIM capital projects that are reflected, that will be reflected. And that was based upon the CIP discussion, so. And then the last item that we have is our deposits and investment portfolio. So between the LGIP and our investments, we have 43.979 million invested. So that is where we're at. Any questions?
Yeah, just, we'll take questions, but I just wanted to, to mention that kind of what a, what a clean presentation this is, and how comprehensive it is, what good news it is in terms of the actual numbers. But just, just to acknowledge what a great team effort this is. Dan looking at CIP and Beth Ann looking at all the financial picture, and everybody on our executive team, the police and everything, contributing to this process. And, and, and the absolute ingrained cultural dynamic of protecting this budget and still doing what we need to do as a city. And I just acknowledge everyone's efforts.
Councilmember Banks?
I just wanted to, to compliment you on the fact that we've come a long way to understanding this budget. And regardless of budgets that you may, anyone may do in their own business, the city budget is very different. However, the elephant in the room for me, and I know this is not a huge discussion we're gonna have now, but depending upon the 976. I know there's gonna be discussion about it. I know that we're gonna have to be real conservative moving forward, I would imagine, especially with our roads and, roads and maintenance and, when, when will that discussion, and I'm sure you've been having it, but when, when will we, as a council?
Yeah, a cup, you know, councilor, obviously that's a great concern. We had, last night, I had a discussion with Anthony, our legislative advocate, about looking at, you know, what are the fixes potentially that are gonna occur in Olympia? The likelihood that there will be lawsuits associated with that, with that, with that, the TBD. And also, we've started the process of, you know, rearranging how, what resources we have, what will go into the maintenance, what will go into the paving. We're gonna lose a, a huge amount of money. We had a, a transmission informally from the Secretary of Transportation showing hundreds of millions of dollars of potential losses to the state general fund for transportation, which would involve layoffs of staff. And I think every municipality, every governmental jurisdiction that involves transportation is gonna be faced with significant challenges. And we're gonna, what we're gonna do, because we started this before even the election, and are now continuing even the first day, trying to find resources, that we will bring to council a plan, probably won't be within this budget, but it will be in the, in the next year, as to how we can address this and what are the priorities the council's gonna establish in terms of the resources that we do have.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah.
I think one of the issues is that there's obviously a significant revenue stream that's line item, which, that's the good news, is it is line item, not just absorbed. So we know exactly where certain elements are. But that line item's gonna get pretty lean, possibly to zero, depending upon how things go. So that's, the concern to me is that there are, we, although the team has done an excellent job when it comes to, you know, identifying roads and of greatest need and looking at transportation opportunities around public safety, pedestrian crossings, and everything else, the money behind that is probably not gonna be there. So we're gonna have to figure out what we can do.
You know, and if you, just a couple examples come to mind, you know, the, the safety enhancements down in, off of 16th Avenue surrounding Woodman Elementary. We added sidewalks that, that weren't planned as a part of that, that road construction on, what is it, 238th or, or 268th? And so we added sidewalks. You know, that was a, a decision that council made and that was used, some of this money was used. That won't happen again. I, I'm, you know, I wonder about 8th Avenue that I, that I drive between Kent, Des Moines Road and 223rd, you know? When will that ever, if it ever gets, gets repaved? Would it, it take us almost 10 years to save enough money to, to pave 223rd? One mile or, it was a lo, I know it was a long time, but that's, those types of things are, are the impacts that, and I know staff will come up, come back with a priority, but like I said a couple of weeks ago, $970,000 or almost a million dollars is a huge impact to this budget. You know, so this was the, the will of the voters, and, and we'll have to adjust to that. But what that means is, is there are roads that are not gonna get repaired. There, there are, the, the washboard roads on North Hill that aren't gonna get repaired. There are sidewalks that are not gonna get repaired. I mean, it, it, it's, it's really a significant impact. And I don't know how many people we hire out of this money to do this work, but I imagine there, there's a handful, you know, we have to be concerned about, you know, that. And, and so $970, you know, for, I mean, your $30 car tabs, you know, and they're never $30, because there's all sorts of other taxes associated with it. It's really too bad that, that the impacts that this will have. So it will be interesting to watch over the next, next year or so, the lawsuits and, and the reduction in services that, and, and, you know, just people comforts, you know, and safety. And that's really too bad, but, but we'll see where it takes us.
Chief Operating Officer, something to offer?
Yeah, thanks. Just following up on the city manager's notes and then some of the issues that Councilmember Pennington, Deputy Mayor Pennington brought up. There's kind of two steps for us to take in response to this. The first one is that the, if the initiative passes, which it's likely to do, it takes effect December 5th. So it has an immediate impact on the budget for 2020. So we've got a strategy that we'll bring forward to council next week on how to respond to that. Because a portion of the funding that we will lose is in our street fund, and that needs to be dealt with, with the budget. So there's an immediate action that we need to take with the budget. And then what we can do is to follow up with the council, either directly with the full council or through the transportation committee on other alternatives in, in what, you know, how do we respond to this moving forward? Because the, the immediate solution is to deal with this from the arterial paving program. I mean, that's the revenue source that we're losing. So how do we pave roads, I, moving forward? And don't have a good answer for that right now, but we'll have some when we get together moving forward, so.
If I could, on another angle, through our franchise agreements with our utilities and so forth, we let them know, and they let us know when they have to work on infrastructure and so forth. So the theory was you open a road once, and everybody would have to spend less money because you could get all the work done at the same time. Is this going to affect our ability to meet them in those agreements and continue to save the public money?
Absolutely. It absolutely will impact that.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, just one more. And, and I would like to follow up with, with my other councilmembers. In that, the thank you for the staff, I know this is a tremendous amount of time to get where you, where we've got. And, and also for the leadership of our city manager, and I've said this, I said this a couple of meetings ago, the siloing went away and it made everything much more transparent and the ability for all of the, the, the department heads to, to work together and, and to come to a budget that is, is sustainable, it's fiscally conservative, and, and it meets the needs of, of our citizens in the community. So thank you all for doing that.
Okay. Does that conclude your presentation? It does. Well, it's, you know, it's, it's hard because it's a great story, and I don't want to take away from that. And the staff has done amazing work, and, and you and your team have done an amazing job. But now we're left with some challenges. But I guess that's the nature of running a city, isn't it? So. Council, this does take us to the end of our agenda, but before I go there, I wanted to remind the public that Monday, November 11th is Veterans Day. And we do have a Veterans Day ceremony down at our beach park that will be hosted by our council veteran, Matt Mahoney, Councilmember Matt Mahoney. And it starts at 10:30 in the morning. And Deputy Mayor Pennington, I believe you're also working through that and helping with that, so I appreciate that. It's always been a pleasure to be able to recognize the veterans in our community. And so I'm glad that we're able to offer this ceremony another time. So thank you both for, for stepping up to do that. And I hope as many community members as possible, especially those who are veterans, who are family members of veterans or whatever, will, will attend. And with that, I think I'll have to check with the city clerk to see if we are meeting or breaking a record tonight. We're not. We're close, okay, well. 20 minutes, wow. Well, since we're not in danger of breaking a record, we'll, let's just get to this. So we are at the end of our meeting. Our next meeting will be a regular meeting on November 14th. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Councilmember Nutting, seconded by Councilmember Banks. All those in favor, please raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for coming. You opposed?
Oh. I don't wanna go this early.
Oh. Well, we have a five, five to two adjournment. Okay. With that, the fives win, and we are adjourned.